Okay. The Board of Trustees in McHenry County Conservation District has determined that it's not practical or prudent to hold a public meeting of the Board of Trustees for October 15th, 2020, in person due to the current pandemic. So we're running under the Zuma Coral Disaster Proclamation, Executive Order 2020-07, Response to COVID-19, Open Meetings Act, Suspension of Public Body Physically Present and Limiting Revolt Participation. Public Media General Repost has been posted at the website. And new meeting password has been posted. A public meeting in order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Let me take this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bring us to roll call.
Trustee Hook?
Here.
Trustee Dom?
Present.
Trustee Thomas? Present. Trustee Brand?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
And Trustee Honey?
Here.
Hey, everyone's here, so we don't need to do the remote presentation. Bring us to public comments. We have a public out there.
Stephanie, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? And if so, if they could raise their hand. I believe we saw two guests come in this evening.
I do not see anyone indicating they have a comment.
Thank you. Bring us right to new business, review of the October 2020 regular meeting agenda. Does anybody have anything for the agenda we're looking to discuss at this time? You have anything?
I do. I'm waiting.
Hold on, Dave.
All right. Unfortunately, it's on Bill's payable. And I noticed that we vendor A5738 Agri Grain Ink, we paid $993 for a bioreactor inline pile. And I wondered if that was reimbursed from the grant from the Land Bureau. And then next week, fine.
Next Tuesday, I think I've made my.
Tuesday will be just fine. And then I have a concern on Tesla's bill for 300 West Island Engineering for $10,226.50. That's double the estimate. So I would like some more information on why it's almost double the estimate. And Tuesday will be fine for that also.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. No one else? Okay, I don't see anything there, so we'll move on. 50th Anniversary Expenditure Strategic Plan 3.18.
I have to interrupt. I touched something, and now I watched the Zoom. Do I have to go back on back again?
Now I see you. You're there. Did you just use it on your screen?
I can't see anybody. Does that make any difference?
You might have just lost yourself, but I see you. If you go to the bottom there.
No, I'll do it again. You can put this nice little link in there. There we go. Okay. Good. Very John. Okay, 50th Anniversary.
All right, so let me briefly describe what we're looking to requesting this evening. So when we went through the COVID and we looked at our expenses, we had items that we had planned to do this year. And then we looked at other items that if we had to get by and postpone, we froze those accounts. So now that we're into where we are and we're making some assessments that we're doing better than anticipated, our conscientious and conservative budgeting has allowed us to go forward with some items. And so on this, we are requesting to go ahead and unfreeze the $12,000 that was in the communications budget. So we can start to plan and move forward with some of the items for the 50th anniversary, since that will start in January. I mean, we start the 50th anniversary. So we're looking at shirts for, you know, staff and board, some other printable items that we will need to promote. A lot of the things that we'll be doing outside of this are things that we would already be purchasing through the year. But on this, it is a specific ask, and it was budgeted, and I'd like to move forward in doing that.
You have any comment? Fine. And you said some of these were shirts that we purchased anyway.
So outside of this, our volunteers, we buy t-shirts for them every year instead of putting the regular logo. We'll do the 50th anniversary. So that's how we do a lot of things, do a lot of things to celebrate throughout the year. These are new shirts. Our staff have not had new shirts or uniform shirts. So this will be a nice way to give everybody something for the 50th anniversary. So we're being very conscientious. But thank you for your support, and we'll be able to move forward with that.
Okay. I assume Ed's doing his presentation.
He is. Ed is on, and so it's going to do carbon.
I hope everyone can hear me. I have a new computer set up tonight. I am not going to do a PowerPoint. I just am going to cover some of the main points in the report that was given to you. I'm happy to answer any questions, but hopefully we'll get us started on a board conversation about where you'd like to go with this item. So I've included in the information sent to you just some basic information about the carbon cycle, carbon sources, carbon sinks, just so everyone's on the same page when that terminology is used. I've also included what I think is a pretty good analysis of the carbon offset market from the Nature Conservancy that was put out, I believe in 2018 or 19, that goes into a lot of detail on it. And also some information that comes out of the past. This is not the district's first analysis of carbon. It's probably more comprehensive than the last two we did. But just so everyone understands that history, our analysis of whether we could become involved in the carbon market started about 2005. And it was precipitated by a request from a local municipality to have spray irrigation set up on district sites at Glacial Park specifically in order to do land application from sewage treatment water. And the concept there was that the additional water could be used to grow trees faster and sequester carbon for the carbon market. That, after analyzing that request, it was determined by the board that that was not a particularly good use for the section of the park that they were requesting. And then in 2008, the board formed a task force to look at land application in a broader sense and come up with a methodology for analyzing requests that may come in in the future about land application. Part of that task force looked at the carbon trading market as a possibility that would go along with land application. But at the time, the carbon market was really just beginning and was not very well organized. So again, the district put it on hold. So let me make a couple more points here before we start the conversation. There is carbon trading and carbon offsets, and those two terms get thrown about kind of together. And I've separated them out so that when we are talking about them, we can kind of divide them up. Carbon trading basically occurs when some entity, usually the government, sets a number of units of carbon, typically tons, that a business can have. They can produce that much carbon in the course of their business. Some businesses will want to create more carbon. Other businesses will be under that carbon footprint that they've been assigned typically by the government. And so some trading can go on in the carbon market. If I need more carbon credits so I can release more carbon into the atmosphere, I can trade or purchase with another entity that has surplus credits because their carbon footprint is smaller. So it's traded in a sense like a commodity. And there is a carbon market worldwide. It's not well developed in the United States, but it is very well developed in Asia and in Europe. Carbon offsets are a little bit different. In this case, you're going to release more carbon into the atmosphere, but you're going to offset it by creating more carbon sinks, places where carbon can be captured out of the atmosphere and held in the soil or held in another way and not released as atmospheric carbon anymore. Probably a pretty similar analysis and kind of a comparison that would, I think, help in understanding this. It is very much like mitigation banking. I know members of the board have some familiarity with that from the projects the district have been involved in. In the case of wetland mitigation banking, a wetland is being destroyed in one place, and the district or another entity will rebuild wetlands in another, typically on our sites, and will be paid for building those wetlands. So whoever has the impact on the wetland is able to go forward with that impact. But wetlands are created usually at a rate five times higher than they were destroyed. So it's very similar to offsets and carbon. You're creating a methodology to capture carbon, and the person who is emitting more into the atmosphere or the business is allowed to do that. Now, the U.S. withdrew from the Paris Agreements in November of last year. We're not formally out, but many, many companies in about 50% of the states have remained committed to the CO2 reductions that were part of those Paris agreements. So that's completely voluntary, and the offset market right now is a voluntary one. Those are businesses that want to reduce their carbon footprint, partly because they're concerned about climate change and partly because in many ways it makes good business sense for them to be a green company. And so there is a flourishing market in different parts of the country with offsets. And one of the things I included was that Nature Conservancy booklet, and it went into what they call NCSs or Natural Climate Solutions. And this is where I think it really has resonance for the district. So one of the cheapest and most effective ways to hold carbon out of the atmosphere or to pull it out and to sequester it typically in the soil or in vegetative growth is by preserving old growth forests. And we often think of the Amazon when we think about that. But in our case, that's preserving stands of mature oaks in McHenry County, also preserving grasslands and preserving wetlands. Every one of those communities actually acts as a carbon sink and takes carbon out of the atmosphere and sequesters it into the soil in a more longer-term storage form. In particular, wetlands that are made of organic soils, so peat and muck, those are among the highest natural communities in terms of sequestering carbon. So the work that the district does in its land acquisition actually is acting as a carbon sink by preserving those communities. The other portion of that that I think is interesting and has resonance for us is that restoring forests, restoring savannas, restoring grasslands, and restoring wetlands all produce new ways for carbon to be taken out of the atmosphere. So the day-to-day work that the district does as part of its mission in preserving land and in managing it and restoring it all acts to pull carbon out of the atmosphere and keep it out of there in a form that is not it's not easy to move into the atmosphere. There is some carbon that goes from our sites back into the atmosphere when we do prescribe burning. But in fact, some really good studies have been done that shows that overall the amount of carbon that is released from burning vegetation is negligible compared to the amount of carbon that those communities are sequestering while they're growing. They're also pulling carbon out that is currently circulating and moving that carbon back into the atmosphere when they're burned. So the big problem we have today globally is not from carbon that circulates as part of the natural system. It's because we're taking fossil carbon, which has been tied up as coal or petroleum, and we're releasing that fossil carbon into the atmosphere. So when you burn a prairie or a savanna, you're not releasing fossil carbon. You're releasing carbon that has been pulled into the vegetation in that past growing season. The good news is that that stimulates the growth of those communities, the plants in there, so effectively that they will sequester even more carbon than they have given off in that burn during the next growing season. So that's the good news about the burning end of it. It really isn't an issue. These natural climatic solutions have the potential for the district to do what it's already doing and to get paid for it. So we have been involved with the Morton Arboretum and the Delta Institute and the other forest preserve since June of this year on looking at a way to produce carbon, a carbon offset market locally in the region that could help finance management restoration efforts at all of these public agencies. And nothing has come about of that yet. It's in the early stages. But the district has pretty much been part of that conversation and has said we're interested if there is some type of program that comes out of it. And then finally going forward and as part of your discussions, I've identified three options we could go with, but I think there are probably a lot more iterations of those. But hopefully they'll get the conversation started. The carbon market is not big at this time, but it's going to stabilize because the climate is going to continue to change. And eventually, political winds will shift, and the United States will move back into some type of accord with the rest of the world. Paris was signed by every nation on earth with the exception of Syria. So it's basically how business operates worldwide. And while we may be moving out of those accords right now, at some point in time in the future, we will move back into them in some form. And when that happens, the district could position itself in a pretty good way as those carbon offset markets build in the United States. So we have the option to wait and do nothing and just let things evolve and then move into that carbon offset market if we'd like once it's more fully formed. We could not engage at all with carbon credits. That's an option. Or we could work either as a lone entity or in partnership or perhaps with the foundation to try to create a small voluntary carbon offset program that is local or regionally. I would say that that will position us well for the future. They'll produce some income. It'll take some startup costs to do that. But if we are going to move in that direction, we at least may want to look at what would be involved in those startup costs. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm not a carbon expert by any stretch of the imagination. But hopefully that's enough information to fuel, no pun intended, a good conversation.
My one question is, so if there's a market out there somewhere in the world, does that market change much? I mean, a great percentage from time to time, or is it pretty stable? Or I guess it all depends. I know how corn and bean markets work. I don't know how big a stood by lot of carbon here. So a good time or bad time to, or good price to get in?
I think I understood it, John. It was a little shaky on my computer. But I think the question was, how stable is that market worldwide? Is this a good time to get in it?
Right, yeah. Is the market up or down, or is it pretty flat all the time where we're at at that?
Well, I haven't followed it on a regular basis. There are some parts of the world where it's more stable. Europe in particular does a lot of carbon trading. Some of the Asian countries like Japan do. So I would say it's probably a lot like all commodity markets. It goes up and it goes down based on what events are happening in the world. We can certainly delve into more information on that going forward to try to give you an idea on where they've been. I know that the price per ton has been everywhere from a dollar per ton to over $100 per ton. So it's moved around over the years.
It's linked. Bill has a question.
Well, I not initiated this, but I had read an article in the Wall Street Journal in August, August 24th, about emission rules, turning saving trees into a big business. So that triggered my question to Elizabeth and Ed and Andy and John as to whether this was relevant to the Conservation District. And like so many questions, I find out that, yeah, they've already looked at this. They looked at it, you know, 15 years ago. And so I'm impressed that, you know, we're sort of on the curve. And, you know, we've all heard about Kyoto, and then we've heard about the Paris Climate Accords, and we've heard about the political issues, you know, in our country to relate to. Do we recognize global warming as real or not, and what should we do about it? But I found this article helpful. And obviously, our friends in agriculture understand markets. You know, there's a bid on one side to buy, and then there's an offer to sell on the other side. And combining the, you know, multiple bids and offers helps you to define a price so that people can come to an agreement. Now, this market seems to be very immature. And I don't think you can see it on the Board of Trade or, you know, any market that we can readily access. But it does seem to be developing. And one of the aspects of this article was that there are brokers now who will put potential buyers and sellers into contact with one another and try to determine, well, okay, is there room here for an agreement? And like any contract, it devils in the details, and, you know, you have to start someplace. So I applaud our joining with other local groups, the Morton Arboretum, the Forest Preserve Districts, you know, in our regional area, you know, to pool resources, to pool expertise. I mean, I have no idea how many tons of carbon, you know, 10 acres of trees has. I mean, is it a meaningful number? Is it, do you need thousands of acres of timber in order to come up with a meaningful number? And if we're, you know, we're interested in this, because it might be a good thing for the planet, we're also interested in it because it might be a revenue source. And if we're literally sitting on a revenue source, we ought to try to tap it. So I would encourage that we try to understand this market better. And at some point, we probably, just like if we are looking to sell a bond, you know, we get input from a broker dealer who says, okay, gentlemen and ladies, this is, you know, this is what the market is. This is the interest rate. This is what, you know. And so there are probably broker dealers that are going to deal with this commodity of carbon. And at some point, you know, you have to have a conversation. And in order to have that conversation, you have to know sort of what your inventory is. So one of my questions to add, I guess, as I finish, is do we have any idea what our inventory of carbon is?
That's a great question, and that is really essential. And there are two types of inventories that we look at in terms of carbon. We have our existing carbon sinks, and we can very easily come up with acreage figures on that. Using GIS, we can say we have X number of mature oaks. We have X number of grasslands. We have X number of, wow. Farmland, and farmland itself can serve as a carbon sink. So it has the potential to serve double duty in a sense. The second thing is potential carbon, and we can do that as well. Next weekend, the district will be, actually this weekend, the district will be planting trees as part of the Big Woods Program at Berango Ridge. And what we've done in the past is map the areas that the district owns that were formerly woodlands. That gives us a blueprint going forward on where we can do these plantings with the public and with staff over time. So our carbon inventory in terms of potential grasslands, woodlands, and wetlands is a matter of asking the GPS computer the right question, separate out by soil type these natural communities, and it will give us what we have to work with in the bank. And in a relatively short period of time, probably a day, we would be able to come up with that figure. I might add one other thing, too. It also applies to land protection efforts. If the Conservation District determines it's going to try to protect a piece of land, we can do the same type of analysis and formula and come up with what it might have in the future in terms of value as carbon credits. I think kind of how much they're worth, I think a good analogy again is wetland banking. When the district first got into wetland banking in the 1990s, they're going price to restore an acre of wetland to offset an acre loss. Someplace else with $25,000 an acre. That would be what the individual having the impact or the business would have to pay to have that wetland recreated. Today, that price is between $65,000 and $80,000 an acre. So as that market developed, it stabilized and the cost kind of stabilized. It's been about 65 to 80 for probably the last 10 years. So I think you would see a similar thing happen with carbon.
And so once you've sold that off, you sell it for a certain amount of time, or is it for eternity? Or what's the timeframe for carbon, your selling carbon credits?
It's long-term, John, and the other thing that's involved is, again, similar to wetland banking. We have to meet particular performance standards. So that requires us to monitor that site until we've come to those standards. You also have to do that kind of monitoring on carbon. It's a little different with each community, but I'll use woodlands as an example. We would have to measure the existing trees, and then each year or every two years, we would go back and measure sample plots, which could allow us to see how the trees have grown. And that's part of how the formula works for figuring out how much carbon they're sequestering. So there's some long-term commitment to it. The good news is that we can work a lot of it into the type of inventory work that we typically do anyway on these communities. Some of it's new, but we're out in these communities on a regular basis doing analysis anyway. So it probably could become part of our inventory work plan.
Well, one thing, I think I have a problem. I know I have a problem because MCCD already protects our land. It's already protected, and the trees are already sequenced. So for me, if we took it for acre of woodland and sold credits to some company, they've done absolutely zero. There's been no increase in carbon sequestration. However, like when we do the coming up Goose Lake, that's new stuff. I'm all in on new stuff, but the existing stuff, it's already done. It's already, I don't think there's a benefit. So that's my comment. But I have to ask John, who wrote a letter in 2005, and it says that about carbon sequestration. You said that forestry community complex for land application is not in this county. I wonder what forest community, what is that? Forest community complex? Maybe I could.
I couldn't quite hear it. And at the time, I did not serve on that committee, but I'm scrolling down to that memo so I can read it.
Can I just add to what you were saying? Well, you know what? Let's go back to it. It's to your first comment. So let's just go ahead and finish this up.
Okay. Yeah, so to make myself clear, I'm all for new stuff. If we can sell credits on new stuff that is sequestered, I'm all for that. But I'm wondering what the definition of a forestry community complex is that we do not have in McHenry County. So I can wait for an answer next Tuesday. That would be fine.
John or Dave, one thing about, one thing about that memo is that involved, one of the issues with the Schaefer system is it involved regular irrigation twice a day for about nine months out of the year. And I think the memo reflects the concerns that the district had about adding that amount of water to any one of those communities. In straight carbon sequestration, we would not be doing that. In straight carbon sequestration, we would not be doing that.
That's good. I'm done, thank you.
So I get, kinda gets to what you were talking about, Dave. And, and you were talking about the difference between carbon credits and carbon offsets. I'm familiar with carbon credits because we do have solar. The devil is in the details on those contracts, as you pointed out, Bill. But, um, in that report from the Nature Conservancy on the carbon pricing offset opportunity, it does indicate that funding carbon-reducing activities, it applies to those that would not have occurred otherwise. So kinda what I'm wondering, and it kinda gets to what Dave is talking about, I mean, there are lands that we have that still could be reforested. So that would be an activity that maybe we wouldn't have been in a position to do financially, but through something like this, we could. What, what is your thoughts on that particular part? And that's doing the carbon pricing offset is where that comment is under, Ed.
I think where the, I think where the district has the most opportunity here is in utilizing this approach for work that we are already going to do. So we're gonna reforest those lands eventually. If you look at the Natural Capital Improvement Plan, some of them are slated over the next five years. Over time, we're going to create more grasslands. We're gonna restore more wetlands. Over time, we're going to maintain a very robust agricultural program. All four of those can be utilized as carbon offsets. So it doesn't change the way we operate. But what it allows us to do is to collect funding for work that the district is already planning to do as part of its mission. So the carbon trading, I'm not so sure that we would have much of a place there because typically, the way they're set up, someone has to, usually a government entity has to say, "Conservation District, you have this many carbon credits for your carbon footprint." And then whatever we are not going to use would be available for us to trade. I think it's a little bit trickier. And I'm not sure that the United States, anyway, is gonna be in carbon trading for some time because part of it is dependent on regulation, whether that comes at the state level or the federal level or the local level. Carbon offsets, where we're using it to either preserve land or restore it, is right up our alley with what we're doing already.
Well, I don't hold myself as any type of expert. This article that I referenced, apparently California has rules and regulations about carbon credits. And outfits like British Petroleum are purchasing the rights to carbon credits. And they don't have to just come from California. They can come from other parts of the country. As I understand, the regulations are written. And I support the idea that, you know, development and restoration perhaps gives you the potential for annual increases in the carbon that you're sequestering as those little trees grow to big trees. But I also under, I took away from the article, and again, I'm, I can, you know, be sort of stubborn about these things, that this is like found money. If you have, you know, so many tons of mature trees that are sequestering carbon, and you don't plan to cut them down, someone out there might be willing to pay you for that credit. Now, um, I don't, you know, wanna belabor this for the, for the evening, but I think we should look into both aspects. Both the issue of, is there a market for our mature carbon? To use that term. And then, you know, what is the market for, you know, potential restoration and new carbon, as it were?
One last question. Hey, thank you, Ed. You're interested.
You will, at some time, let Elizabeth know what direction we're going, right?
That's a really good follow-up. So I, you know, and Ed, I appreciate in pulling some work and to have the opportunity of the conversation. And Treasure Cook, I appreciate you bringing the article forward. And, you know, I tried to align it, where in the strategic plan would it go? You know, obviously, it would probably go in a couple areas. I chose to align it to alternative revenue, you know, since it's been a topic of a big important conversation that we've been having, but it would hit probably a couple of other goals as well. So I guess maybe to think about it and then give some direction to, you know, we're working, and as I noted, been working with some groups already, but obviously to monitor and, you know, continue to be involved with that. But if you want us to take a more accelerated approach or, or doing more studies or something we would need to know and then figure out how that works into a work plan. Because we've got things identified, so.
Well, Ed, so what would be the next steps to be taken then? I, I don't know if any of all this, I'm not up to it enough to know what the, and instruct you to do. What would be the next, what would you, what would you say would be the next things that, next items that would be taken care of if that's what we're gonna do?
Well, I, I guess, probably what makes the most sense is to delve a little bit deeper into how the offset markets could work in the Midwest and whether there are any active markets locally that we could actually sit down and talk with the folks who are involved. And, and probably get a more comprehensive approach to how they would work and what would be involved. This is really sort of like opening the cover of the book. And we, I think we'd wanna delve into the first few chapters and, and be able to bring back to you a little bit better idea of how a carbon offset market with the district might work in, in effect, as opposed to in theory.
The other, the other thing that would be interesting to look at is just to give a reasonable understanding of the forested acres that we have. And then what a rough value of those would be, whether or not there's a market that's obviously gonna be a key piece. I, I just have a feeling that there's some revenue there potentially, but I don't, I don't think it's, you know, gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars. It might be maybe tens of thousands of dollars. But, so it'd be interesting just to get that. What's our, what's our total, you know, real forested acres that would be available? And what would be a rough value on it? And, you know, and, and again, that value, we don't really know that we could get a ballpark. It would give us an idea of, of how deep you keep looking at it.
We can do that.
We can give you instruction. We don't know if we're talking about $50 here, $50,000 or $500,000.
And I'm worried, I'm, I'm, this is a difficult subject. I'm worried about how much time to have to deal with it.
Well, that's, so we would have a question or an answer in two months, three months? What would, what's?
Well, but it sounds like, I mean, and this was interesting timing. Like you said, you, you kinda brought this up, but they had already started the process in terms of looking into it. So I think the process seems to me, on at least some level, has started, right? And let's just, I would just say, I'm, I'm, I feel confident about moving forward and looking into it. I don't think that this is a, certainly not global, probably not nationwide, but regionally, there might be opportunities. And maybe not hundreds of thousands of dollars, like Andy say, but it may be enough to, to get some of the restoration work done that we need to get done. So.
I mean, I'm not an agent for anybody. In that article, they mention a corporation called Finite Carbon and describe them as a pioneer in the business of helping landowners create and sell credits. So you could reach out to such an organization, and it doesn't have to be that one, and say, hey, we have X number of acres of trees. We're curious to know, where are you in? Are you active in the Midwest? What's involved? Are you interested in the conversation? I mean, if the door is shut and they just don't seem interested, you know, well, fine. But I think you have to ask. And I think we have a very credible organization with a lot of very solid people. And you might get their attention. And if they could put you in discussion with, you know, with Exelon Combat or, or British Petroleum or someone that would pay you, I mean, if it's $10,000 or $50,000, we could buy more T-shirts or, you know, we could do some other, we could get a new truck.
My question is, of the talks I have with, when you're dealing with the Morton Arboretum, what, what's the discussion there? What, where does that evolve?
Where it's evolved is that some of the forest preserves are reluctant to get involved in it because at least the direction that this particular one has gone involves eventual harvest and replanting. But the, in the discussions I've been in, I don't think that that's a hurdle that can't be gotten over. So I think what we could do is, is, and that, those discussions are continuing. They're really in very, the very preliminary stages. I think we could put together something more detailed that includes what we would have to market and reach out to some of these organizations that are already involved. We do have contacts with the Nature Conservancy as well. And see if we can, if we can firm up what things look like and bring it back to you, if that's what you'd like.
How much time would you need, Ed?
I think for the preliminary analysis, because we did, we've done a lot of this work in terms of knowing what's on our sites, we probably could have something to you before the end of this year. So maybe by the December board meeting.
All right, it's great.
If you need anything else from us.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Okay. Move us on to 5.4, top 10 frequently asked questions.
Yes, so.
Great questions, by the way.
So you obviously, I put a copy in your folder. So thank you, everyone, for taking part of this to kind of give some thoughts. And again, the reason this is a strategic plan item, it kind of fell under to how we're gonna communicate on, on many levels. Many of the questions, I think, that were posed are questions, they're not new questions. They're questions that keep coming up. So, so then I go back to saying, okay, are we, how are we missing? Are we not sharing the right information and, and answering the questions? Or we need to present it in a different way, which was part of the solution. And so really, I guess, what I want tonight for the discussion, and there's a lot of these things, I group them by category and, you know, with the trustees that identified those as, as potential areas. So was there any that, that you thought maybe really weren't out? There may be an individual opinion. I mean, they're all good questions. So there may be questions, though, are some of them a question that's your question? Or did you come at it, this is a question that you've heard out in the community? And then it would be helpful also, once we identify, in order to target our message, what segment of the community? Is it, you know, is it geographically in a part of the county? Is it, you know, residents that just have moved in here and they don't know who we are? Is it long-term residents that are now, you know, retired and maybe on fixed income? Is it a specific sector, the business community? I mean, there's a lot of ways to which you'd wanna communicate differently depending upon audiences.
Well, I'll start with one, on the second page, or I don't even know if it's the first or second page. Under programming, two and three seem to be the same question.
Yes. And that is one about the sharp shooting for hunting. Correct. And I took everybody's questions basically verbatim. If they were given to in a statement which I said that was acceptable, I tried to move the supposed into a question.
A bunch of diverse questions.
So for those that are at home and participating, what the board had done was filled out questions. I compiled them. They were into categories, and I'll just read them through. Compiled statute, Conservation District Act, governance and personnel, finances and property taxes, land acquisition, agriculture, property management, public safety, advocacy, and programming. Well, so from reading this list, is there any other question or thought that didn't get tapped into that you feel like we missed? And is there anything, I mean, again, I think any question that was brought forward is a question worth answering. Once we get through here, then what we will do as a staff is we will go back in and provide a response. And then the goal will be that this will come back to the board for discussion on the response, and then that we get concurrence on the questions so that when we're out speaking and whatever we publish, this will be our position on the question. And that way, we all speak or sing from the same song sheet, so to speak.
So this is gonna be in like a booklet form or something, when you're all said and done? Or what's the form it's gonna take when you're all done?
Well, I think that depends on who the audience is. And so if we can break out, I mean, so you could do an FAQ. We could immediately put that on the website. But let's say there's a sector of the community that doesn't have access to internet, right? That may not be the best delivery message. So is it a piece of paper? Is it an info YouTube video that we do on a subject? Is it just an infographic that we're able to talk about as rap? It's very.
So many websites I go to has a list of frequently asked questions. So it's a real common thing. But you're right, the delivery is a different kind of career.
So I guess on some of the, from the authors that put the question forward, I guess I would go back and ask, you know, is it a general? Or as we begin to answer, once we get the questions and we get the answers, then I think we take it into the next form of how do we, how do we position it?
So what's your timing on when you figure out, put the answers all together?
Well, for tonight, the first part was to get the board. You've seen this, you gave me thoughts, have a discussion. If you're in agreement with all of these, or if there are ones that you wanted to take off to say, "Well, maybe we can just get this answered. It's important, but we won't, we spent a lot of time on it," then I will begin working with staff.
I think there's, every question is valid. I think that, I wouldn't take anything off.
I think some will be trickier to answer than others because like, number five under finances and private parties is, "How much money does the district need to operate?" That depends on how you're gonna operate it and what you're really going to try to accomplish over the next five, 10, 15 years or whatever. So that, that isn't just a, an easy one to answer.
So we need to refine the question. How do we wanna answer it? How much do we need to operate annually? How much do we need to operate over a five-year period?
But it gives you a chance then to educate. In other words, they open the door and then you step in and spin it, you know, in the direction that you think you, you wish to go.
But that could be a page or two answered just for that one question.
Well, right. And, and so I, but I mean, I think, you know, you could probably just try to reduce the finances and property taxes to a, you know, well-written 100 words and say, okay, we're aware that, you know, people are concerned about budgetary issues. This is the framework of how we operate. I don't think you need nine.
Nine questions.
You know, nine, I mean, just off the top of my head, in one of our publications, just like frequently answered, asked questions, you know, each month, you could take one or two questions in a certain area and, and discuss them.
Put them in landscapes or something?
Yeah, do a question of the month, or quarter.
Right.
Couple or a focus of what they wanna get to this thing on.
You know, something that was relative to finance. Maybe Andy could, you know, come up with something relative to land and so forth, or property management, you know, the respective director could, that would be the focus. So, I mean, I think this is a, this is a jumping off point. And maybe the various directors will think of, "Well, how might I respond to some of these questions? Can I start to write something down and, and give it back to us to see what we think?"
Right. And this hasn't been shared with them yet. This is just, I brought it here so we could start. And then that would be my next step. And then, yes, staff, we're gonna come back with what we would normally, from our. And then, yes, staff, we're gonna come back with what we would normally, from our experience and knowledge, are gonna respond in a certain way. And then that may lead in itself, and we bring that back, a conversation. Because if there's a pivoting or philosophical change that's occurring on certain aspects of how we do business, then, then that also, we need to get concurrence, right, to what that looks like.
For us as the board, I think it'll be interesting to see how we react to your answers. I think these are good, good questions now, tell us your answers.
That's what I'm saying, I think, you know, it's all gonna be, uh.
Our job is not to give you the answers, our job is to react to the answers.
Well, that's what I'm saying, well, we'll answer them, but there may be, and I think that's still a good conversation to be had. Cause the goal is when we leave here from a board and we're talking to other elected officials, and as our government, that we're speaking with one voice and we have concurrence on our messaging. Well, we, I think what you're talking about as well is trying to come up with, um, maybe grouping these, like under finance, it's not nine questions. It's four or five categories that is general and can get to a specific concept, you know, whether it's stewardship, financial stewardship, budgetary needs and so on, figure that out. Um, I know, yeah, my approach to this was more, um, I actually called a few people, cause I, my first thought was, I don't know, um.
I did the same thing, so I'll tell you.
Right, because you're sitting here and you're, you know, you're doing it and you're, you understand, you know where some of the answers are, maybe not all of them, probably not most of them, but, um, so that was a little bit of input from other people. Um, one was a comment that was made last spring during our budget, last time around, and a comment that was made then, so I was just trying to drop on that and a couple things that, you know, myself, so, um, looking at from, trying to do it a little bit, some different perspectives. So.
Anything else?
I mean, I did go through, I did go through like the surveys, I thought, uh, you had mentioned that, and so I was going through back to the presentation that we had from, I do not have to say this, equity, equity, equity. Um, it just, they, there were several things in there uh, that provided opportunities to, to ask questions, like, because of our favorable ratings were so high, a lot of the focus was on, and even people who, people, non-users also rated us favorably, they were, we did not come in as an unfavorable. Um, people who are lower on, um, in terms of usage, still rated us generally favorably. But it gives us opportunities to maybe question or ask, why are some of these groups not coming out and what can we be doing? Or what are some of the questions that might get them to come out? And I don't know if that actually ties in or not, but, um, you know, it was, it was that, it was that, that people, even people who are lower in terms of usage still like what we do. So how can, how can we target those people and help get them out? What kinds of information do they need, kind of questions that might spark some interest? Um, there was opportunity for the, um, the debt. It gave the finance section on there, because we were rated, more people didn't understand about the debt being paid off in 2026. And that was an opportunity for educating people at that point. Um, and that could be part of the.
So that's one of the questions in here.
Yeah, that could be part of the information in there, so, I don't know.
What else? Okay, we're good.
So we will work this through, again, it's a tactic on the item, we'll start tracking how this moves in as they all do, you'll see certain things, we go back and work and then, I don't have a timeline that'll come back to you, but it will come back to you. And, uh, we will keep moving on that, so thank you for your participation, appreciate it.
Brings us to executive director's report.
Okay, so you did get a rig report, we had the update on the Pigeon Dead and you all signed and all was done, so great job, uh, to Andy and Maristam and, and the board. You had through, so that went through, so again, great rates. Um, and now that's done, um, beyond the working of the pieces to, to get, uh, all that moved and now it's been working with Andy and council to, to prep on that. And, um, so that's where that, Andy, anything to add to it?
No, just, uh, we got a great rate, 1.2, so it's, it couldn't have gone any better. The issuance cost came in right about where we thought it would, that we presented the board back in July and August, so, worked out great.
You're really good. What were we paying the family before, what was the interest, I don't remember what it was?
The trust, what do we, the Pigeon Trust, what do we pay?
What were we paying them for a rate before?
Uh, 2.5, so we cut the rate in half.
Okay.
Okay, so that was that, uh, let's see here, update on the Kennedy County groundwater use restriction ordinance. So I was at the committee of the whole this morning and I provided, uh, during a public comment, I again spoke to, uh, support of the resolution to oppose the groundwater use restriction ordinance and, um, that will move forward. Um, my feeling on the read on that is, uh, just there wasn't really much discussion beyond, uh, they are very, uh, spoke that they have already taken a position prior that we got from the state's attorney's office to oppose, uh, doing this. And so my guess is that they'll give a very supportive vote, um, and, uh, on Tuesday of next week. Um, so depending on how our meeting goes next week, um, again, if we get done and move through what we have, then we can get over to the county at seven. And then if we need to provide a public comment again, I don't know, but, um, I think they understand, they were very appreciative of us coming out and to have, uh, Tony Grossmark present at the board of health meeting and to provide that material for them. Um, Dave, to your question about legal fees, um, to prepare that, you know, the necessary work to, uh, bring forward was outside the scope of the insurance coverage. And as soon as we moved it, it's kind of a fine line, I saw Caitlin hit the pain for everything through the derma on, on the other types of work that we were doing when they were doing the wells and being cooperative with the EPA towards the site remediation. Um, so I will go back to Steve, the, the pricing that came was a, a, an estimated cost and.
It's homemane with this estimated cost.
There was an estimated cost, right? And so of course, as you go into things, things get a little bit more, um, depending on what do the neighbors like the time to do research. I did ask and I, and I did talk to President Hennig, that we wait to get through, um, through the county and then determine what would next steps be. Ideally, I'd like to know when the derma would pick this back up, you know, at some point it should shift. If we were to litigate our own, they're not gonna pick that up, that's on us, they can't do it. Um, and there's many actions yet, but this still can go, even if the county doesn't allow the groundwater use, um, restriction ordinance. Um, they, there's still other ways to where, um, if the EPA, uh, and the Attorney General, um, continues to do what they need to do, then hopefully, uh, the site will be cleaned up and they'll do the onsite and offsite. But there's a lot of things that can happen.
I know, I'm aware of that.
And it could be a while.
This has been going on for what, five, six years already?
Well, we came into it and, well, it's been going on, I mean, from when the property was acquired, the district became involved with the contamination in 2015. And in 2015, that is where, um, we had leased the property, we had two irrigation wells, as you recall. We, uh, through the EPA, um, they asked us, uh, to, if they could put, for Grand West to put, um, the monitoring wells. And we put 10 in so they can monitor the extent of the contamination of the flume. And then, um, they asked us, once they got back from that, to stop using the irrigation wells. And, uh, we followed their request and the tenant, we discontinued, uh, using the irrigation wells. And as to this day, um, the EPA hasn't said it's good to use those wells. So, um, those irrigation wells are there, the equipment's gone, but they're, they're available still for testing. So, um, we've been very collaborative, but I think at this point, um, so it's really up to the board of how much more you want council to do at this point. So the recommendation that I have with, and President Hennig was to, let's go through the county and then let's just, let's see what goes on.
I'm good with that.
I'm not, what about spending dollars? We don't need to unless the board feels that there's some more proactive role you want to take with this.
Well, if the avenue of the 300 West and Arnold's is going down now, fails for them, then they, then they're back to where they didn't do something, right?
Right, so we might have some other.
If they don't, so then we have to see what the reaction is before we can react.
Correct. They could go many different paths and, and I don't know where they're gonna go.
Yeah, it seems to me that it's in the hands of the Illinois EPA.
And Attorney General.
And, and thus far, I mean, my eye stance is that they haven't really given any deadlines to Arnold and 300 West. Uh, they, however often they review these, these matters, um,
We could go on forever.
You know, they're, they're getting a pass just because the EPA, you know, hasn't definitively told them, do it by this date or then that will be a penalty. So, I don't know if we have any input to the EPA or we send them a quest, a memorandum. But I mean, let's get through the county first and, uh, maybe let's get through the November elections and.
Do you, do you have any, do you have any sense why the Illinois EPA, the Attorney General has not done anything to this point more than what they, what's been done?
That is a really good question and I do know.
I do know if, if this was, you know, if they, if this was a standard amount of time or if it, if it's, or.
It's.
Is this be, you know, this is expected or?
I think they, they go far, what happens is they, they get a response and then it goes in a valleys for a while and then they get a response and then somebody else has to respond. And so I don't know, and we've asked that question, just, there's been a really time, you know, to draw this out, the longer, the longer, the longer. And I don't really know what, why, you know, what the end game is, um, you know, the EPA needs to enforce what they already put out there to make them do this. So I think they're just trying to find other outs and, and there's still some room for negotiations, et cetera, on this process. So I think we do need just to hold, stand down and let's monitor and, uh, and see unless the board, you know, even a communication to the EPA will take counsel. And when this was with, with insurance coverage, we did meet with the Attorney General's office, we were meeting with this, and again, we were meeting with, um, the EPA officials about the property and having conversations in their office down in Springfield, so, um, you know, that's not out of mind, but we will, you know, attorney will have to pay some fees.
Well, perhaps, perhaps, uh, the derma can be our agent to get back to the EPA once the county has hopefully, uh, turned down this groundwater thing. And then you have a discussion with Mr. Grossmark and the derma and say, uh, ladies and gentlemen, how should we proceed? Because, I mean, I don't think we're getting any satisfaction and, and they're just, uh, happy to, you know, happy to, to do nothing, which is all the.
And doing nothing, and then we're spending money. And so I'm just being budget conscious and to the board to, um, know where we're at, get direction and feedback and not have more bills unless that's the direction the board wants us to go.
Well, the derma could potentially be our agent, correct?
Yes, and we are beginning to find out where they will pick back up again. So I do think it needs to get to the county, that was clearly not something that they were.
Get through the county, right?
Yeah, let it get through the county, let that be asked and answered, and then they'll pick back where we started, where we paused.
Yeah, we need to just wait and not have any more bills. Yes, yes, thank you. To reinforce or move, I thought that'd be easy one for us.
Okay, then, um, the historic building tour, so that I aligned with strategic plan 2.3A and, uh, John Kramer, uh, sent and put together, and I hope you could be been out driving around, I know some of you have already, you've spent some time looking at those properties and others, there's still time to do so. Um, what we're targeted right now, if John can get the report together, is we will have a discussion in November, like this December, but we'd like to bring that forward to you. Um, you know, for this year with our capital, um, it's not a critical issue, um, but going forward, um, to have that conversation, I think, you know, these are buildings that either have been placked or have been identified in a master plan at some point to have use. Um, however, um, you know, time is, and the elements, if we don't do anything, you know, we'll be, we will end up losing them. I provided the article of just down the street at the Motorola plant to you, that was in the newspaper with the McHenry County Historical Society. And when we talk about cultural buildings and historical, they, they are, um, you know, I think there's all sides of the conversation and it will bring out some, some more, um, very thoughtful, uh, conversation that will also, you'll have facts and figures and then there's emotions and things like that. So just preparing the board, then you've got that, those discussions will include all of that.
So I have been to all of them, um, but I was in the narrative and I forgot when I read it, but I made notes, the Pigeon Farmstead, it says it's historic, it wasn't placked. What is that, I wonder what that term, the other thing, the Foxla, uh, barn is historic. Well, I know it's an old barn, but I don't know if it's been placked or, or how it got determined to be historic. So those are questions that I had. I did love the narrative on the Kennedy Way Station, uh, that, uh, this little area had nine saloons, love it. So it was for fine ladies away from the hot tempers brought on by Irish whiskey and lumberjacks. I love that, so that's my only comment.
So we will make sure on some of those questions, we can make sure that's part of the report that we provide to you. Um, the only building that has, to my knowledge, that's been placked or identified with the McHenry County Historical Society or Historic Commission, or Historic Commission does the placking and that's across the way to Kennedy Station. Um, the other buildings, they may have been identified and I don't know if the Pigeon was a turn of the century farm, um, with a hundred years or, or that, I'm not sure. John, um, we can find out, do you know that?
If you, yeah, if the question, um, it's a little sketchy to hear you guys, um, if the question is, uh, uh, the, the placked significance, the district has, um, two structures that have some sort of plaque on them. Uh, one of them is the Kennedy Way Station, that's the brick building that's, uh, south and east of Brookdale on 14. And the second one, and I think was about five or seven years ago, the district actually initiated placking the Powers Walker House, which is the one that's in Glacial Park. Uh, I, I think it's a glacial, uh, I think it was just the house, I can't remember if it was the House and Browns or something like that. Those are the two that have some sort of, um, recognized plaque on them, uh, for historical significance. And then everything else is, um, known to be an older structure.
How come that, listen, doesn't list all of the historic things that we have?
So this, the purpose of this was the buildings that are not being maintained or repaired to the level, like they're not. Powers Walker is embedded, it's a, it's a, it's an act, it's an area that's been restored, it's an area that we are maintaining. And so even though it's placked, it's not on the list, these are on the, nothing's happening to them, what are we gonna do with them?
We haven't spent money on it, we may have to spend money on it, or if we decide not to spend money on it, they may. That McConnell barn, I've been in it, is a spectacular structure, I'd hate to lose it.
Is that on the Pigeon?
Uh, that's, uh, McConnell, uh, Edvishman.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the big question is, is then, so, okay, so we would save them, then what, what's the, we have a purpose for them going forward, other than just to have a old barn that nobody ever goes into, nobody ever sees? You know, I guess when I, I went on a hike with, where we were to go down to Indiana, the dunes and everything with my family, there's a place down there, one of those parks that you walk through old farmsteads, it's part of the trail and something like that. And it becomes part of what they're doing. And the, uh, information they have out of each side of each building was interesting, as to what it was used for, and so it was an interesting place. But if it doesn't fit into anything else we're doing, then we're just maintaining a whole building. Which is, which if that's what the board wants to do, it's fine, but doesn't necessarily fit into the rest of our, our program. So if you're short on funds, is that something you can afford to do?
So we'll make sure we answer the legislative statutory requirement that's part of our act and, and, and that. And, and then, um, you know, how people live with the land and, and then it's a philosophical, financial decision.
And what is the status of that McConnell Farm Foundation? That was sort of a second, um, communication, is that, is that foundation or real organization that's working? Is that, is that foundation a real organization that's working to rehab that McConnell Barn in Richmond or is, I saw some shingles in one place. I mean, is that a, are there 10 people that meet and work there or is that just something that was put together 12 years ago and sort of not very active at the moment?
I think you hit the last remark, is exactly right.
There was a lot of work on it.
There was, there was a group, they, they, you know, there's neighbors in the area that, you know, obviously had a love for preservation. At the time, the district was working on the master plan that came together and if you read the master plan out there, one of the caveats that was by the board discussion, because this is kind of where I came into at the time, was, okay, are they going to help us take care of and raise some funds to help do that? And then there were volunteers, they did workdays, they worked on the home, you know, and, but I think it does, it never lifted off as a financial. And again, when you get into these historic building restoration projects, it's a chicken and an egg conversation. Do you plaque it? If you plaque it or you, you acknowledge and recognize, then you can get some grants and funding to do the work. If you do that though, there may be additional costs because it's very prescriptive of what you can or cannot do to a building. And so then the costs go up. And so, you know, it's, it's, you know, so it's, it's your passion. I have a passion for cultural history and I think it's really important, a passion for natural history, but it all comes down to what's the right thing to do and, and where are you at?
So, I mean, there isn't a active McConnell Farm Foundation at this point.
Not active, not active. Okay. Okay, so that's historic buildings. So please, while the weather's still good, get out and, and look at the buildings and do that.
That's my case of we want the weather bad. I can't really take off.
Yeah. So please do that. Great tour for the fall. And then the last item in your board packet here, I didn't send it out, but we've been working, you saw the strategic plan, so that's, that's on your, you know, just to review how we're tracking in some new ways. But in this piece, this is just a strategy map. I apologize for it being so small, but the discussion that I want to have and what I will be working with the staff is, you know, we've got our goals, objectives on our four pillars and then all the things that we're working towards and we've got teams that are tracking and, and doing all of that. But at the end of the day, the key performance indicators are those metrics to how do we know when we're successful? And we can do a lot of work, let's go back to our frequently asked questions discussion earlier. We can pose the questions, we can answer the questions and, and we can talk to people. And so is the metric, you know, of success, if we're looking towards, you know, building community advocates and understanding of, you know, our elected officials is one of the goals that are out there to understand who we are and what we do, you know, is a metric that we need to reach out to, you know, a certain percentage of individuals, a frequency of time to reach out. But that may, we can talk to people all day long, but if we don't measure the right things and they don't understand what we're doing, then we can spend a lot of time going after something that really doesn't give us the return on time and effort. So, so what I'm doing right now with staff is, if you look at this, the first part in the color is exactly the specifics of where we're at and then where it says baseline, one of the things we wanted to identify, and again, this is kind of that inventory piece, but, you know, looking at how many acres have been restored, how much, you know, what's the number of linear miles, you know, equestrian trails, fishing areas, you know, number of staff, that becomes the baseline. And then when you break it down into your strategic objectives, the areas that are in the white, then we look at some of the performance indicators. So are we looking at increased revenue, reduced operating costs, for example, under financial, under the customers, which would be the people, the floor and the Juana, you know, is it your satisfaction ratings? Is it enhanced groundwater recharge, cleaner waterways, you know? And then, and then when you put these larger performance metrics, how do we measure them?
Yeah.
Some of them are going to be difficult to measure and so, and I don't want us just measuring things that spend a lot of time.
Yeah, you have cleaner water. How in the world, unless you are self-water sampling, I don't know.
So I want to kind of share kind of the, the path that the staff are going to be on and then we'll come back. My goal was to be able to present what we believe is our performance indicators and metrics back to you by December. And then the metrics wouldn't be brought back to you quarterly like we do the regular strategic updates of how we're moving on the tactics, but at the end of the year, we would kind of do a compilation of how we're tracking on those metrics. But it's
I don't know how you come up with some of the metrics, I just don't know.
But again, trying to identify from the board's perspective on the strategic plan of your vision, you know, where's the target? Where's the target?
So you're going to tell, you're going to come back with us, what you and staff put together, what you think the target is and we're going to tell you what we think that's the target we're looking to have.
Correct. And then we're going to say, that's the target, how do we get there? The target.
Okay, so in December, you're thinking, you're going to have that
I'm still not clear on that. Say that again. You're going to put down metrics on all of these things?
We're going to identify based on our pillars and what we believe were really the core of what we're trying to achieve.
Right.
Right? Not the busy work, but really at the essence, what's the net result of the work that we're trying? Because that's how the strategic tactics got identified. We thought it would solve the problem or help us move closer. And so we're then going to put like what we believe is the target. And then our target, we may, you know, again, the target may not, when we come back, you may say, well, we want the target, you came only halfway, you know, 50%, we went to it 100% or it could be vice versa, right? And we're going to have to measure because otherwise if we're, if we don't aim high enough or we don't hit the target, we'll miss.
And how do we judge that by what's on the colored side of this or the white side?
No, the, the, the colored side is right now of the specifics beyond the baseline, we've identified priorities on reach of the goals, right? On reach of the pillars. Restore wetlands and then we have specific action items, you know, Pigeon that was one of them, you know, celebrate the district's 50th anniversary, conservation of the bass program, restore, you know, 500 acres of restoration area wetlands. You know, so that one, 500 acres, to me, that's, that's, that's been identified. It's identified in a specific goal statement because we said 500, right? Some of the others, there's no numbers associated with them. So we're going to have to identify, what does that mean? And where we get is driven by capacity resources. And so it may be great vision, but in this plan, we may only be able to take that target to 25% and it may take the next time to take it a little bit further. That's okay, but we just have to measure it, right? Is that, am I making myself, is that my sense?
I think that's better.
Yeah. So I just wanted to get you an idea and then, you know, if there was something right out of the gates that you're saying, well, gosh, we know we want to have this achieved in the next three years, then that feedback is helpful. And when do you want that feedback? We're going to be talking about it, I'm sorry, this is from the board here. So we're going to be talking about this in November or December. My goal that we would have this back, will the staff work, I think we're going to have to work through this in November, I mean, October's going quickly, we're going to work on it in November, you'll probably see it in December.
Let's not say till December.
Yeah, that is fine with me. And so if there's anything that's like really glaring, then maybe get that information to
Off-target?
Right, then get that information to staff in November. Yeah, if you say like, here's your trying, if you hear something that's impossible.
I guess anytime you see something that you want done, the sooner you get it to Elizabeth or to somebody, the sooner you're better.
Okay. Right, like, I mean, we can have, we want to increase, you know, program participants by X and you've got a baseline, you can determine what that percentage in two years. And then there's also variables like the experience issue with COVID that was out right now.
Well, as I was saying, with getting people involved right now, how can you set a target?
Right, so some of them may not be. And so then it's not worth time trying to track something that's, so I only want to measure what's really going to provide.
So what if I tell you, I see something in here that I don't think is really worthwhile and I just tell you, kind of the rest of the board knows.
I will communicate, I will, once I take it into consideration and I will, I don't want one-on-one, I think we all need to stay on the same page.
They want system all the way. You can tell us.
If that's okay, but I would like to communicate so we all work with them the same way.
Everybody gets one black ball.
Hasn't looked the same. Well, yeah, if I, that year, seven projects.
That's right.
It was one less.
Okay, and then the other, I have one more, let's see here, there was one more thing that I wanted to share under Director's Report. So, well, two things actually, just I've got it. So we were at the Village of Algonquin and I see one of our Algonquin trustees, I don't know if he's still on or he left, I thought I saw him.
Yeah, Jerry, Jerry's still here.
So Jerry's one of the trustees for the Village of Algonquin and we were down there on Saturday and they have done a very amazing job in working collaboratively as a unit of government, working with us and our staffs. Again, to Tim Schong, your village manager, and Bob Matur and Russell Harn on the, on the community development. If you get a chance to go down there, they're really trying to build this cycling and walkable communities to the downtown area. The Makers Path that we transferred land over to them because they had received a grant to get to that new park that they're trying to work through an economic stimulus. There's some great amenities to provide information, a new bridge that they put in that they did and it covers over access. I mean, this is a really nice job and I just want to do a shout out and again, this is a, it's a model project, I think, and for two communities, a district and you're in a government working collaboratively, I think it's a lot of
And the downtown's quite attractive too.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, if I may add, we just approved last night at our village committee, the whole, the two kiosks that are going to be, they're state-of-the-art kiosks, there's one in Tom Park and one at the Prairie Path Trail, which is all high-tech. It's going to be very nice for people on their bikes going through our town, using the bike path, looking for information. It's going to be very, very useful and that was just approved last night.
And this is a very active part of the trail. I mean, we go down, even before all the amenities, that day they had part of the Chicago Marathon decided to run out there. It was a really, really busy day and it was very beautiful, so they really done a nice job. Excellent.
And then the best of the facts, the Northwest Herald, Shaw Media, just announcement that we've got voted best, one of the best parks outdoors in McHenry County, Glacial Park, this we obviously seem to be allowed designation and then our hiking and running trails in McHenry County. So voted best of the best Glacial Park to get, so. And then the last, then, I'm sorry, I've got one more from here too, from the board. So I did get a question, you know, IEPD is always pushing out information on educational sessions, everything now is gone, we're probably more, everything's virtual right now. So if there's opportunities that are coming that you wish to take part in, we do have funds for the board to participate. We can also do some certain things like to come into the office or do a viewing party in here and do something as long as we don't have for the board, that would be no more than two, but a way to, you know, kind of sit down and to, to review a session for those virtual meetings, if that's helpful to you. But there's options, so, you know, please feel free to see something, don't hesitate to reach out and say, hey, I'd like to do this.
Well, they, right now, they have, because I was thinking that too, they have the Legal Symposium going on right now.
Right.
And I was wondering, I mean, it is one of those things where it's virtual and it'd be nice if we could do it together or some, or somehow share it so that we're not having 200, 200, 200, 200. So maybe there is some opportunity of viewing it together or once you pay for one, is there an opportunity to, is there a link that can we share? I mean, is it, are we having to pay for seven people to see it or is it, you know, like you said, maybe
Yeah, so it depends on the event and IEPD, obviously, they've been hit too with a lot. Everybody's been pushing on a lot of free webinars and they did that are very minimal low cost on certain ones, the Legal Symposium, that has always been one that they have paid for. So they're not, but they may, not seeing it now, they may though end up afterwards reporting it and then having that available to those that pay. We definitely get resources and the Legal Symposium, a lot of it is, is a manual, but you get all of the, there's materials. So there's a large legal binder that we get that has all the updated and a lot of laws, what's, what's a case law that's occurred. So I usually go to the zoning areas that keeps me apprised on certain movements and happenings and on this issue. So it's a great, it's a great program. So I will continue to test if there's ways to be more economical, but a lot of times it isn't for you really, you're personally.
Yeah.
So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. If you else have anything else, if we have other there, anyone have anything that I'd bring forth? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a statement?
Yes, this is Jerry Kogalski. This question is for Ed Collins. Ed, you were talking about carbon trading and when you're replanning trees and you're doing wetlands restoration and everything else and, and using the market to try to get a little offset for capital, one thing I wanted to know, you did, you talked about trees, but you didn't specifically say the difference between a silver maple versus an oak? Is there a difference in carbon capturing between, between the species of trees?
That's a great question, Jerry, and yes, there is. There is a difference not only between species, but there's also a difference in the age of the tree. Younger trees will sequester more carbon, older they get, they slow down in carbon sequestration. There is, there's a couple of online sources that will give you general ideas about trees and the rates they sequester at. Stay tuned to December when we, when we do another report.
Okay, I'll look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Nothing, nope.
Okay, thank you, sorry. All right, um, without, we take a motion to adjourn. Bill, for a second. Linda?
Uh, Trustee Firth?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Baum?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
And Trustee Henry?
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, everyone.